Directions on how to find the full meeting materials, applications, and staff reports on the city's website are also included in our public notices. I noticed that we have seven of the seven commissioners here, so everybody's here. We have a quorum. Brandon, do you have any staff announcements?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. And the consent agenda, we have approval of January 14th, 2025, regular meeting minutes. Anybody have any corrections or additions?
September 10th.
January 14th?
January 13th. Oh. September 10th. Yeah. Can I have a comment?
Okay. And on the agenda, it says January 14th.
You know, I was looking at the wrong one, sorry. But I do have a comment. Sorry, I left my laptop in the office. In the, I asked a question of the attorney for the representing, sorry, Stabenhagen, about the data source for economic data on Ashland, having a low percentage of, sorry, a high percentage of low-income people. And she responded then later, and I didn't see that in the minutes. And I thought it was pertinent.
You didn't see the response in the minutes or your question?
Neither the question nor the response.
So my understanding is that we're doing new minutes these days. We're doing minutes that summarize our actions, not our discussions.
Okay.
So I'm not, so they're going to be shorter.
That's the case.
Right.
All right.
They're going to be much shorter.
I would note that the meetings are recorded and available for anybody that wants to review the full meeting audio or video.
Okay, on to public forum. If you wish to speak on an issue that's not on the agenda, please fill out a speaker request form. It's in the back, the pink forms, and give them to Michael, and you'll be recognized.
Did we get a vote on the minutes?
Oh, sorry. Somebody want to make a motion to approve the minutes? Russell?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is in the packet.
Seconded. Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we did get a vote. Moving on to the public forum. I don't see anybody who looks like they want to talk to us on something else, so we'll move on. Unfinished business, we have approval of findings for PA-T1-2024-00254, which is the request for amendment to the Oaks of Ashland subdivision approval. The approval was PA number 2000-127 to remove a public pedestrian access easement provided to connect Highway 66 to Sutton Place through the subdivision open space and continuing on between the properties at 554 Sutton Place and 562/570 Sutton Place for Sutton Place Tax Lot 1600. Have any of the commissioners had any ex parte contact on this issue?
Nope.
No.
No.
No. No ex parte.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Marr, have you reviewed the, in order to vote, you need to have reviewed the meeting minutes, meeting recording, the minutes and materials?
I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions that anybody has about the?
Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three.
Can you hear us, Greg?
So I think we can hear him, and I don't think you can hear our microphones.
Greg, you got us? Greg?
Greg, can you hear us?
Don't think so.
Don't think so.
Do you want him to talk and see if we can hear him?
Yeah, we could a moment ago.
I'll have him.
Can you hear us now?
Testing, testing, one, two, three.
So we can hear him, but he can't hear us. I just sent him a text and told him to talk.
Testing, testing, one, two, three. One, two, three.
I suggest you pull it up on RV TV, and so he can hear it, because we can hear him and respond.
But we have the same issue happening with Jennifer Brager.
It's going to be a pretty decent delay.
And she's already emailed us as well.
Yeah. Says he could call myself in the month of speaker, but.
Yeah, let me get him to hear him. I'm just, I don't know if it's his speaker or something. I might be working.
But Jennifer Brager's having the same problem. So it's definitely, we're not broadcasting.
It's going to turn on RV TV.
Okay, I'm going to pull up RV TV.
Hello, Commissioner?
I've been notified by his computer.
He did.
Yeah.
If I end the call and then restart it?
That's what I was just going to say.
Will we be able to use the same link? That's the question. Yeah, that's the question.
I thought that there was a speaker that was open there. After I wore the station also.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we had an advanced question.
Yeah, I don't know what to do at this point. Commissioner Parkinson, can you hear me?
We have a forum, so they had an action later on. We can't ever.
Let me find out if he's got RV TV up. Do you have RV TV up? Brandon, what do you want to have happen?
Well, I mean, if you have a forum, you can listen, use the chat to provide comments.
Okay, so you can use chat.
Yeah.
To get on.
Okay, Commissioner, I can hear you on RV TV, and I'm going to go unmute while I listen.
Okay.
So there might be some delay issues.
Okay, back to our regularly scheduled agenda. We are looking at the findings for approval of the Sutton Place Tax Lot 1600, the Oaks of Ashland amendment. Does anybody have any questions about the findings that were put before us? No? Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the findings? Would somebody like to make a motion on the findings?
I'll make a motion to approve the findings.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the findings as shown in the packet. Roll call, Michael, please.
Commissioner Kincaren?
Yes.
Commissioner Heron?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner McCracken-Jen?
Yes.
That's a long delay.
Yes.
Commissioner Heron?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner McCracken-Jen?
Yes.
Commissioner Parkinson?
Yes.
Chair Verner?
Yes. Okay, the motion is passed and the findings are adopted. We are now moving on to.
There's a long delay.
That's a long delay.
It's a long delay.
Okay, we are now.
Mr. McCracken-Jen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Chair Verner?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is passed and the findings are adopted. We are now moving on.
Thank you. Okay, again, we are now moving on to the Type II public hearing that's on our agenda, and we will now begin discussion of the settlement of the record following the Type II public hearing PA-T1-2024-00255. To remind you, a Type II public hearing is held before the Planning Commission with the Planning Commission decision being appealable to the City Council. In this case, the hearing was held at our regular meeting on January 14th, 2025, and the hearing was closed. The record since then has been closed, and no more public testimony will be taken. The Planning Commission has had a challenge from the applicant on items that came to us in various three stages of our keeping the record open. We will review these items before we begin deliberations. Certain letters were received by the Planning Commission between January 15th, 2025, and January 22nd, 2025, from people who were not parties of record and should be accepted into the record because the record was open to all participants. I would ask the Planning Commission to make a determination whether to include or exclude these letters in the record of this proceeding and to make a motion to that effect. The letters include from Ryan Hartman, Josh Hedge, Sam Inata, Aki Robinson, Mike Workman, Regina Ayers, Danielle Garten, Mark Chergwin, Peggy Chergwin, Kathleen White, Board Member for Housing Land Associates. Russell?
I would like to make a motion to include the letters that you listed in the record.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept these letters into the record. All those, roll call, Michael?
I'm going to call on Commissioner Parkinson now, and then continue on with everyone else. Commissioner Parkinson? Commissioner Kincaren?
Yes.
Commissioner Heron?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner McCracken-Jen?
Yes.
Chair Verner?
Are we still waiting for Greg?
Aye, and then continue on with everyone else. Commissioner Parkinson?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is passed. Certain other letters were received by the Planning Commission after the public hearing, the public record was closed by non-parties of record between January 23rd, 2025, and January 30th, 2025. I ask the Planning Commission to make a determination whether to include or exclude these letters in the record of this proceeding and to make a motion to that effect. They include Oliver Harkula, Susan and Frank Samika, Susan and Frank Samika a second time, Kristi Riggins, and Carl Knudsen.
If they came in after the record was officially closed, I do not think that we should include them in the packet or in the record. So I would motion to deny them.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to not include these in the record. Michael, would you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Parkinson? Commissioner Kincaren?
Yes.
Commissioner Heron?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner McCracken-Jen?
Yes.
Chair Verner? Michael, would you do a roll call, please? Commissioner Parkinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kincaren?
Okay, the motion passed and is adopted. The applicant has had certain information, has asked that certain information be stricken or redacted from the record because it contains new evidence. The evidence, the new evidence is incorporated into comments shared with the applicant by the city on January 30th, 2025, as a PDF entitled, quote, "110 Terrace Street Public Comment rebuttals received by January 30th, 2025," end quote. The page numbers identifying specific comments herein correspond to the page numbers in the PDF. Specifically, the applicant asked that the following be stricken. A, portions of the January 29th, 2025 letter from Sidney Drier O'Connor West LLC, pages 1 through 17. B, attachment to January 29th, 2025 letter from Mei Li Odo and Brock Dumont, pages 20 through 39. C, portions of the January 30th, 2025 letter from Rob Patridge, page 43 through 68, and the January 30th, 2025 memorandum from City of Ashland Planning Staff, which is pages 69 and 70. I would also note that Rob Patridge, pursuant to the email we got tonight, who is a party of record, has asked that his material not be stricken from the record. That would be to not include item C. I would ask the Planning Commission to make a determination whether or not to strike these four items upon finding that they do or do not add new evidence to the record and to make a motion to that effect.
Can I ask a question?
Of whom?
Good question. Never mind.
Could I, clarification on what's being stricken from the packet here? Is it in today's meeting agenda, 110 Terrace packet, let's say the first document to be Was it a total, the page total was 17 pages from Sidney Drier, and there's a group of those pages?
Yes.
Six through 17. So they've already been stricken from the packet that we have here today.
So the clarification is that the attorney for the applicant has provided a document that shows those pages as blank. However, they were provided by the respondents and included in the record. So the exhibit provided by the applicant's attorney was striking those so that if the committee, commission decided to accept that request for redaction and rejection of that information, we'd have a packet with those pages blank or those sections or portions of letters blank. But those full documents were included in your packet as submittals from the applicant's, or I'm sorry, from the other respondents.
Thank you.
Is that clear?
It's clear except for, you said the applicant's attorney asked for those to be stricken, and what was the reason?
That they're new evidence.
Okay.
She's alleging that's new evidence. Russell?
So let's say, according to Mr. Patridge's request, that we were to extend the record being open so that the information could be included. How does that affect our timeline for responses and our deadline for this action?
So all planning actions require a determination by the city be completed within 120 days of the date of the application. This application was submitted on December 6th. Its expiration date is April 17th, so the city has to make a decision in that period of time. In looking at a, were the commission to decide to keep the record open in order to incorporate new evidence, city staff would need to mail a notice to the neighbors to let them know that the record is open and that they can submit additional information. That notice has to be mailed 20 days in advance of the hearing in which it's discussed. So if this decision tonight is to open the record, we would mail out that notice on Friday and schedule a Planning Commission meeting on March 11th, as quickly as we could come back on March 25th, adopt findings from the Planning Commission's decision. Then we would send out notice again to the applicant and all parties of record that they have 10 days to appeal that decision to council, which would then extend that period until April 7th for an appeal. Then if appeal to council, we'd send out another notice for a 20-day period in advance of the council hearing, which would push the council hearing to May 6th, their first meeting in May. So in order to keep the record open, we would have to have the applicant acknowledge that a 30-day extension was necessary beyond the April 17th deadline in order for the City Council to have a hearing within, due to that open record. The applicant's materials that submitted indicated that at this point that they were not in favor of retaining that open record, and again, requested that the information be stricken from the record as staff impermissibly and opponents of the project submitting evidence that should have been submitted during the open record period, which was the first eight days after your January 14th hearing.
Thank you, Brandon.
So is the basis of this one word that was new, or, what is the standard of new?
So I'll use a staff memo that I drafted and included in the record that, in this second period of time, that essentially was stating information about travelers' accommodation enforcement proceedings. That is new factual evidence that was not submitted during the open public hearing before you, nor in the first seven days. And so the applicant's attorney indicated that that is new evidence in the record that should not be admissible and as such be stricken from the record. From staff's assessment, we concur that that information should have been submitted prior. There is a question in terms of whether a project opponent or somebody providing a letter is responding to information that was submitted in the first seven days, and that is part of Mr. Patridge's concern, is that he feels a portion of his submittal was actually submitted at the meeting and handed out to the commission as part of his public record submittal on January 14th.
But there's no more specificity than provided here about what in these many pages is the issue?
To the degree that the attorney for the applicant actually redacted sections, those are what they feel is new information. In the memo that I referenced that was drafted by staff, the portion redacted was the new data. data regarding enforcement proceedings, and not the entirety of the letter in their request. And the applicant's attorney is here, and again, has indicated an interest in speaking to the item, but again, it's the commission's determination as to whether to open comment for settlement of the record questions.
I'm inclined not to open the record.
Yep. I agree.
There's a lot of nodding of heads. Okay, we won't, we will not open the record. So I would ask that the Planning Commission make a determination on whether to strike these three or four items upon finding that they do or do not add new evidence to the record, and to make a motion to that effect.
I would like to pull Rob Patridge's information out of that because he did submit a letter to us at the hearing. So removing that from the group of things to be redacted makes sense to me.
I would agree with that. My only concern is that exhibit C wasn't produced until after the record was closed.
His, his, his letter was included in the, it's already in the letter, in the...
Subsequent to the public hearing and subsequent to the seven-day period, on, I believe, on January 24th, Mr. Patridge received additional information from the state from a public records request, and then submitted that. But that was, again, after the January 22nd close of public record for new evidence.
And if I, and if I can clarify one of the issues I think the, the commission is struggling with, is that the applicant brought up argument of reasonable accommodation from the beginning, and the argument would be that, or the, the issue I see that the commission is struggling with is, well, that was the issue, they opened the door, and this was in response to that, it's not new evidence. So that's the assessment, one of the frameworks that the commission can look at in assessing this question.
So, and, and the response came in during the open record?
The response came in on January 24th and then was subsequently submitted to us, I believe, on the 29th of January. And the record for new information, new evidence, closed on January 22nd.
Okay, so, yeah.
So that's for the portion of the public records request information that was made by Mr. Patridge to the state.
I still, thank you for your comments, but I, it still seems that we can't allow it. Yeah.
I would like to make a motion to redact from the record portions of the January 29th letter from Sidney Drier, the attachment to the January 29th, 2025, letter from Mei Li Odo, the January 23rd, or I'm sorry, the January 30th memorandum of City of Ashland Planning Staff, pages 69 and 70, and then exhibit C from Rob Patridge's January 30th letter.
Any discussion? Michael, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Parkinson.
Sorry, do, do we have discussion first?
If you want to, sure.
I'm confused by the statement. Be reminded, I only submitted evidence that was submitted by the proponent? So, dot, dot, dot?
So the public records request to the state of Oregon was to the Oregon Health Authority, and the information requested and received by Mr. Patridge and submitted, again, after the January 22nd deadline, was information that the applicant had provided to the state of Oregon.
Aye. Sorry, do, do we have discussion first? If you want to, sure. I'm confused by...
So with that, that's the point of confusion, his assertion is that the applicant, having initially generated that information and submitted it to the state of Oregon, was information they were aware of even before these proceedings began. Nonetheless, it is new information to this commission that this decision on the motion is addressing.
Okay, now let's vote. Michael, would you call the roll? Thank you.
Commissioner Parkinson. Commissioner Kincaren.
Yes.
Commissioner Heron.
Aye.
Mr. Phillips.
Aye.
Commissioner Maher.
Aye.
Commissioner McCrackenchin.
Yes.
Chair Verner.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So we'll move on to deliberations. The Planning Commission is here tonight to deliberate and reach a conclusion. The issue before us is that staff presented to the Planning Commission is a request for formal interpretation of the Ashland Land Use Ordinance as it applies to how a peer respite home, as defined in ORS 430.626, is regulated because peer respite homes are not identified in the Ashland Land Use Ordinance. Applicant proposes peer rest homes be classified as a similar use to types of group living, which is defined in the Ashland Land Use Ordinance and is allowed in all residential zones. Applicant has also requested a reasonable accommodation consistent with the Fair Housing Act and Americans with Disabilities Act. Staff found in its review that peer respite centers are similar to travelers' accommodations because of the short time period during which clients will be at the center. The site is 110 Terrace Street. The applicant is Rogue Planning and Development in Tomasi, Braga, Dubai, representing Stabenwagen. The property owner is Shirley D. Patton Trust. Comp plan designation is single-family, and zoning is RR.5. Before we begin the deliberations, I will ask commissioners if they have had any ex parte contact on this issue. Commissioner Heron.
No ex parte.
Commissioner Kincaren.
No ex parte.
Commissioner McCrackenchin.
No ex parte.
Commissioner Mayer.
No ex parte.
Commissioner Parkinson. Commissioner Phillips.
No ex parte.
And I have not had any, any either. I'm not aware of any challenges for bias, prejudgment, or personal interest.
No ex parte.
No ex parte.
Commissioner McCrackenchin.
No ex parte.
With those preliminaries done, the Planning Commission will now begin deliberations. We need to decide the, must decide the request for interpretation of the Ashland Land Use Ordinance as it applies to peer respite homes. Is, is a peer respite home more similar to a residential care home under the category of group living? Or is it more similar to travelers' accommodations? I would ask the Planning Commission to make a motion identifying which potential land use category a peer respite home is most similar to within the land use ordinance.
I move that we find that a peer respite home is more similar to group living residential care home.
Is there a second to the motion? Motion dies for lack of a second? Is there another motion?
I move that a peer respite home is more similar to travelers' accommodation due to the timeframe of those residents, and therefore should be categorized that way.
I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we find that the peer respite home is more similar to a travelers' accommodation. Michael, will you call the roll? I'm sorry, excuse me, do we have a discussion on the motion?
Can you read back the motion again?
Commissioner Kincaren moved that it is more similar to a travelers' accommodation.
There was more, and it's based on the timeframe of residents being in the house, the accommodation. So it's based, since we don't have a peer respite ordinance, but, always, okay, so I'll do it again. Peer respite application at this time is more similar to our travelers' accommodation requirements because of the timeframe of the residents in the home, and therefore that would be the framework that I would view it through, or that we should view it through. It's a sloppy motion, sorry.
If I might offer a suggestion, by the timeframe of the stay?
I thought that's what I said. Closely, anyway.
Go ahead.
I, I guess I want to make sure if it is traveler accommodation, we're not using the word residence.
Great, would you rewrite my motion? No, seriously.
The motion of this applicant, of this applicant most similarly represents traveler accommodations, which is a short-term stay of less than 30 days.
I don't think we're there yet.
And does not qualify as residential dwelling.
Are we there? Is that okay with a second?
That's okay.
Okay. Any further deliberations?
I would like to be on the record as saying that I believe that the time duration of this stay is a singular rule-out, given what I understand, in terms of reasonable accommodation and the definitions, is, is overly harsh, in my view, because there are several aspects to it, whether fees are collected or not, whether food is provided, whether services are provided, et cetera, so. Hence my logic, which I'm sure was surprising to some people, but it is my logic.
I'd just like to say, while I fully support the mission and benefits of a peer respite center in Ashland, it's my opinion that the proposed use at this location is more appropriately classified as a travelers' accommodation rather than group living use. As such, the level of activity and operational model associated with the peer respite center is not appropriate for RR-5 zoning district. The Ashland Land Use Ordinance defines group living as a use characterized by long-term residential occupancy. In contrast, a travelers' accommodation is defined as lodging for short-term stays of less than 30 days. The proposed peer respite center aligns more closely with the definition of a travelers' accommodation.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion and a second?
We do.
Okay.
So, we're ready to vote? Michael, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Parkinson. Commissioner Kincaren.
Yes.
Commissioner Heron.
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
Commissioner Maher.
Aye.
Commissioner McCrackenchin.
No.
Chair Verner.
Yes.
We have made a, oh, sorry.
Commissioner?
Thank you, the motion is adopted. We now need to address the applicant's request for reasonable accommodation, and I ask that the Planning Commission consider the applicant's reasonable accommodation request in light of the fact that we have just passed a motion saying that the, that we find that the use is a traveler, is similar to a travelers' accommodation, and make a motion to that effect.
I want to do a great job of how, what I understand, but in reading all the information about reasonable accommodation, it also says that cities are not required to go against their own land use ordinances. It's the way I understand it. And so I move that we do not view this as a reasonable, or deny this reasonable accommodation request.
Are you suggesting that it fails one of the two tests?
I'm suggesting it fails the tests, yeah.
Okay.
Where it's not being denied due to, sorry, words. Okay.
Couple things, one, Commissioner Parkinson made a chat motion.
Oh.
Our city attorney has it on.
I was gonna try and help the commission with the proposed motion, if that, um, okay. Give me one minute.
I would, I would suggest that we say, that we say something along the lines of a traveler's, a traveler's accommodation in an RR dash one point, one point five zone does create a fundamental alteration in the city's zoning scheme or zoning code, and that, um, if uses that are not allowed in a zone, in, in a zone are now allowed, it basically screws up the organized and systematic purpose of the code, and the point of a zoning code is to have orderly locations of uses after logical review. And then, I would also add that this, um, when a use is not allowed in a zone is then allowed, this requires an amendment to the code, and amending the code is a proper process for following, to follow, to change the uses in each zone.
I don't think we're there yet still, but that's better.
You do have a motion from Commissioner Parkinson in the chat that a reasonable accommodation does not apply because it's a traveler's accommodation rather than a residence, and as such, he's moving to deny the, the reasonable accommodation request.
Okay, sorry, sorry about that, Greg.
I would second that.
Okay, we, we have a motion and a second? Is there a discussion on this motion? Hearing none.
You were asking if there was a second.
Uh, there was a second, Russell, seconded. So, um, I will ask, I, I do have some, some discussion, I actually want to know what a, can you pull up the motion again, the chat? I'm wondering why it doesn't apply? Because it's a resident, because it's not a residence?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Can we move to a vote? Michael, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Parkinson. Commissioner Kinkaren.
Aye.
Commissioner Heron.
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
Commissioner Marr.
Aye.
Commissioner McCrackenjohn.
Yes.
Chair Verner.
Okay, the motion is adopted, it passed, is, oh, sorry. I'm assuming the mayor of the motion wouldn't agree.
Commissioner Parkinson.
Aye.
Okay, now it has been adopted that a reasonable accommodation is, is, does not apply because the finding is that the use is not residential in nature. So, I think we're done with this issue. Thank you all in the audience for your participation and your coming here tonight. Please do leave the council chambers quietly as the meeting will continue. Do you want to take a break? No? We can move on now to a type three public hearing. A type three public hearing is held before the Planning Commission with the Planning Commission decision feeling appealable to the City Council. This hearing is on PT dash T3 dash 2024 dash 00010, a request for annexation, zone change, right-of-way permit, and right, and right-of-way for a 4.8 acre property located at 30, 300 Clay Street. The request also asks for a 25 lot, parentheses, 37 dwelling unit outline plan approval for a PSO or Performance Standards subdivision, as well as limited activities, WRPZ or Water Resources Protection Zone permit, and a tree removal permit. The site is 300 Clay Street, applicant is Rogue Planning and Development for Bentella LLC, the property owner. The comp plan designation is suburban residential. The county zoning is RR dash five, or one unit per five acres. R dash one dash 3.5 is requested in the city. The map is 39 dash one E dash 11 dash CB, and the tax lot is 1100. Before we begin the public hearing, I will ask commissioners if they've had any ex parte contact or done any site visits. Commissioner Heron?
No ex parte, and I have done a site visit.
Commissioner Kinkaren?
No ex parte, I've been on the site.
Commissioner McCrackenjohn?
No ex parte, no site visit.
Commissioner Marr?
No ex parte and no site visit.
Commissioner Parkinson? Commissioner Phillips?
No ex parte, and I did do a site visit.
And I have not had any ex parte contact, and I did do a site visit. I'm not aware of any challenges for bias, prejudgment, or personal interest.
No ex parte, I have been at the site.
And I will now open the public hearing. Derek, would you like to make the staff presentation?
Sure. So as Chair Verner mentioned to you, the application before you is a request for annexation and zone change for a 4.8 acre property at 300 Clay Street, along with annexation of the adjacent right-of-way. Annexations do require at least 25% of the base density, be provided in affordable housing, and here eight affordable housing units are proposed at 80% of area median income to meet this requirement. Proposal involves 25 developable lots and four open space areas with a total of 37 dwelling units, four outline plan subdivision approval under the Performance Standards, a limited activities and uses permit for the installation of public utilities within the Water Resource Protection Zone of a very small wetland, and tree removal permit to remove four non-hazard trees that are within proposed rights-of-way or building envelopes. And the Tree Management Advisory Committee did review that tree removal request and had no concerns. There is one component of the application which was not included in the staff report, which I apologize for, it's an exception to AMC 1858050G3, which is a requirement that affordable units have a comparable mix of bedrooms to the market rate units. The market rate units here are a mix of attached and detached two, three, and four-bedroom units. The affordable are proposed only as two-bedroom townhomes. The applicant's assertion as the basis for that exception is that the applicant is building those townhomes as affordable rentals, but they won't be building all of the detached single families, and as such, they can't control how those lots develop in terms of the number of bedrooms. If the commission ultimately chooses to reject that exception and recommend that the council deny it, you could recommend a condition be addressed with final plan to meet the bedroom mix, as well as requiring deed restrictions to meet the affordable housing bedroom mix. And then, just to orient you, the blue arrow there is pointing to the subject property on Clay Street on the east side of Clay between East Main and Ashwin Street, just not too far south of the recent East Main Park annexation. So on the screen here, East Main Park is up here, subject property at 300 Clay is here, Snowberry Brook is here, with the two phases of affordable development here, and then Wing Spread over here. And in aerial image, just to give you a, a feel for the property on the ground, you can see the existing single-family residential development and associated accessory buildings at the southwest corner of the property, and then generally, the property is fields that aren't developed. There is some greenery here that extends into the subdivision to the north, that's a small wetland that has been delineated, and that delineation has been recognized by the Division of State Lands as a very small wetland. In our adopted wetlands inventory, it was assumed that the wetland on the subject property was over a half an acre. It's actually less than 500 square feet here, so it's significantly smaller than originally envisioned in our wetlands inventory, and as such, the applicant's proposing to treat it as a, a possible wetland under the inventory that allows a 20-foot wetland Water Resource Protection Zone. Here's a delineation as, as recognized by Division of State Lands. You can see the, the only mapped portion of that wetland is about 400 and, I believe, 418 square feet here, which is smaller than three parking spaces. And in terms of the subject property, four trees, as I mentioned, are proposed to be removed. I've identified those with the red X's here, and again, the Tree Management Advisory Committee reviewed, and on the basis that those are within building envelopes or necessary street right-of-way, they did not have any opposition to the requested removal. This is the lot configuration proposed. Again, there are 21 lots proposed for development as single-family residential, which under state law could include accessory residential units or duplexes on those 21 lots, and then four lots, that would be four-unit townhome development on each of these four, and the affordable housing is proposed within those townhomes, and then four open space pieces as well. So your packet includes this site plan illustrating the mix of unit and bedroom types and distribution around the site. As proposed, the applicant would install a new neighborhood street running east-west, as well as public alleys at the north and south, and a neighborhood street extending angle between Snowberry Brook to the south and Bud's Dairy to the north, and then a private street extension would serve private parking here between these type D and F units and the townhomes at the east boundary of the property. Your packet materials do include a number of conceptual examples of proposed building types. Those are all SFRs and not subject to site review, but a collection of them are illustrated across the top here. In addition, they've provided schematic designs for the townhomes proposed. As part of their proposal, are asking that the townhome site review be deferred and reviewed concurrently with final plan approval. So these designs would be finalized through final plan subsequent to annexation. This is conceptual rendering of the development at buildout. And then, subsequent to the staff report being prepared, we did receive a number of public comments from neighbors in the Wing Spread development who were concerned with some issues primarily focused on Clay Street and transportation, and I believe some of them may be here to speak tonight, but just to give you an idea, concerns had to do with the width of Clay Street, especially at East Main, at the intersection, and with traffic volumes, difficulty accommodating bike lanes and on-street parking, difficulties exiting to Ashwin Street, especially left-turn movements, the suggestion that a traffic light was needed at Ashwin Street, concerns with the maintenance on Clay Street with potential impacts to fire evacuation, problems with speeding being exacerbated by more traffic, and that, those comments were provided and echoed by six residents of Wing Spread, as well as a seventh resident that said congestion and difficulty exiting to Ashwin Street, fire evacuation, and adequacy of the water system were all concerns. To touch on a few of those, Public Works has identified that there are facilities in place to serve the property from adjacent right-of-way, and specifically did not note any issues with utility capacity, including water. In terms of Clay Street, it is a neighborhood collector. The available right-of-way and frontage improvements in place along the subject property are consistent with the standard cross-section shown here. Existing right-of-way width is 60, when this cross-section from the set standard would be from 57 to 61. The paved width is 28 feet. There are curb gutters, park row planning strip, and sidewalk on the subject property side with no proposed alterations. As, as part of that standard cross-section, you can see.
Hey, Brandon, quick question. I heard you say that the width of Clay Street right now is 28 feet, and then in the standard there, it's showing 32 to 34.
Right, so if the opposite side of the street were further developed, there would be the potential to add a lane of parking if they chose to. That 28 feet, two 10-foot travel lanes and seven-foot parking, they're about a foot beyond that now.
Thank you.
Having some technical difficulty here. So, again, neighbors have expressed concerns. The applicant does have their traffic engineer here tonight who can speak to it. Would note that their initial traffic analysis indicated there weren't significant, or weren't sufficient number of peak hour trips to necessitate a full traffic impact analysis, but their traffic engineer is available and can speak to, to these issues as part of their presentation. So again, staff's recommendation tonight would be that you make a favorable recommendation to council with regard to the annexation, outline plan approval, and limited activities and uses, and tree removal permit, and that you include the conditions included in the staff report, as well as any additional conditions you'd like to address if you feel the need to, to address the mix of bedrooms and the required affordable units. I would also add condition number six, B and C, condition C should begin lots 17 through 24, not 16 through 24, because 16 is referenced in both B and C in the staff report, and we don't want to treat 16 two different ways at the same time. So with that, if I can answer any questions, I'm happy to.
I didn't see a good depiction in the, the packet of how this ties into the Snowberry, the street that's in Snowberry Development. I mean, I see where it exits this property, where did, what does that look like on the adjacent property?
Um, it's the continuation of angle, and I, the applicant can probably speak better to the grade there. You know, there's a, a raised section here that is intended on Snowberry to eventually be an east-west street connection, so they've connected across that to continue angle and connect to the subdivision on the opposite side of the subject property here, and they've also, in the southeast corner here, reserved a section for connection of that future east-west street that would go over to Tolman eventually. I'm, I'm not sure if I'm getting your full answer here, but.
Maybe I'll ask the applicant. Maybe I'll ask the applicant.
Yeah, it is connecting here at the south directly into Snowberry.
Thanks for the presentation, Brandon, and clarifying Lot 16 in the conclusion here. Quick question. For the affordable housing section, I see all two-story, two-bedrooms here proposed. Would you say that that's a standard demand, or are we seeing demand across, you know, smaller units to larger units that more match the layout of the subdivision? In other words, are we providing for the need in affordable housing?
I'm not sure we see enough of it to know. I think when Snowberry developed, the first phase of Snowberry was all three bedrooms because they were trying to accommodate families. The second phase, they tried to split into more of a mix because I think they had some demand beyond that. I don't know honestly where that demand lies now, but we've tried with that standard to have a broader mix within subdivisions rather than concentrating, you know, a specific number of units, particularly on the lower end of the bigger subdivision.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, can I ask one clarification? So the logic for the exception is an inability to control the development, essentially? Control the outcome?
I think that's really the gist of their argument.
And why would we approve that?
Well, that's part of your deliberation. Essentially, the section of code that's in reference stipulates that the affordable housing units be commensurate in size based on number of bedrooms with the market rate unit. The intention being that we don't see a development of all the market rate units being three-bedroom units and all the affordable required units being studios. I think the applicant has taken measure to look at two-bedroom units as really trying to address larger unit sizes, but it would not be proportional if all of those 21 remaining single-family lots develop as three bedrooms. In that case, you would not have 25, 25% equivalency of the affordable in three-bedroom. So that's the request for the exception, and they can articulate as to the issue of their control over the development of the market rate single-family units.
So kind of, sort of affordable housing?
I would say the two-bedroom units required to be affordable would be deed restricted by the city to be qualified, I believe, at 80% area median income. And so they would be, not just kind of, sort of, but legitimately affordable units within our program. The exception is based on the size of those units, may not be commensurate with the proportion of bedroom sizes in the market rate.
And not enough of them, if I read correctly? Not 20%?
Well, they, there's an, I use the term equivalency value, because if you're targeting, the 25% requirement is based on if you're targeting households earning 100% area median income. If you target households at 80%, it drops that requirement. Essentially, the lower the income target, the fewer units are required because greater subsidy is required to make those affordable.
But if I calculated correctly, it's 16%, not 20?
I think...
Four units out of 25?
Well, they're doing eight units, or two fourplexes.
Oh, the four, they're, okay, two fourplexes, so that's eight units.
Eight units of affordable housing.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, I think they're required to have nine at 100%, and by going to 80%, the eight equates to nine.
I will let Commissioner Parkinson know that it's too early for a motion. We're going to hear from the applicant now, but thank you. And, Michael, do we have Amy Gunter? Oh, there she is. Sorry, I thought you were going to be on Zoom.
Hello? Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Amy Gunter, Rogue Planning and Development Services, 1314B Center Drive, Post Mailbox 457 Medford, Oregon. I am representing the property owner, Ryan Saftis of Bentella LLC, and he is on Zoom. And with me this evening is Kim Perducci, Traffic Engineer, and Ray Kissler from KSW Architecture. As staff noted, the subject property is 4.8 acres with the reduction of the wetland area and its buffer. The annexed area, or the developable areas, 4.79 acres. This is a topographical survey of the property. The proposed annexation in, of the property debuts city limits on three sides, the north, the south, and the east. The proposed annexation allows for the future growth of Ashland as intended in the comprehensive plan, and provides for needed housing and complies with the applicable ordinance sections ORS 222111 allows for annexation of properties that are contiguous with the city limits. The applicant proposes that the city utilize the annexation procedure outlined in ORS 222.15125 for this application. This procedure allows for annexation without the need for election when the landowners of the proposed territory, as well as the majority of electors' consent in writing. The applicant is the sole owner of the property and has provided written consent for the annexation of the territory, and Jackson County Roads has provided written comment agreeing to the annexation of the Clay Street right-of-way to be annexed. The proposed zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan for suburban residential, and the resulting zoning is R13.5, which is the same as the zoning to the north, to the east, and excluding the three properties outside of city limits, the properties to the west. There's a performance standard subdivision overlay is requested with the zoning map adoption, which will allow for a performance standards subdivision to be developed on this property, and outline plan request is included in this proposal. As noted, there's 29 lots, 21 lots for detached residential development in the form of either detached residential, attached duplex, or with accessory dwelling units. Four lots accommodating four fourplexes of multifamily units and a total of 37 dwellings and four open space parcels. The base zoning, the base density, sorry, of the property is 31 dwellings with the proposal of 37 dwellings. The density is exceeded. The duplex and accessory dwelling units are not included in density calculations, and then the additional four lots of the 16 apartment units. The proposed layout conforms with the performance standard subdivision standards. This is a revised site plan from what you have in your packet, primarily addressing solar concerns for these lots that are narrow. Oh, that doesn't do anything. Providing for the unit types that are single-story on these lots so that the findings address a solar access, and it wouldn't be necessary for single-story dwellings. The proposed layout exceeds the 90% minimum density required annexation, and at the time of final plan, the site design review, as staff noted, for the multifamily structures, including final building envelopes, lot coverage, landscape, and irrigation plans will be The proposed street layout is a gridded street system that includes a connection of an incomplete neighborhood street, that's Engle Street here, the development of a new east-west public street called Arrow Lane, the creation of two alleys here and here, and then the development of a private street that will provide access to the rear of the narrow east, or the narrow north-south lots, and access to the multifamily development area. The proposal also preserves an area for potential future east-west connection of a public street into the adjacent properties further to the east, as envisioned in the transportation system plan and the street dedication map. The proposed layout provides for standard block lengths, widths, and connectivity is proposed to comply with all the standards for public streets and emergency vehicle access. The new neighborhood street is proposed to intersect with Engle Street at a T, and this driveway is adequate for fire apparatus access hammerhead. I think this addresses Commissioner Heron's question about Engle Street. So Engle Street pavement right now ends. If you did a site visit and you stood at the edge of the pavement, that's right here, and you noticed a pretty substantial drop-off. That's the reason for the curve in the street, is to help mitigate some of the over 10% slope that is presently happening there. Here's what's happening now, and here's the street proposal. So this curvature helps mitigate some of that steepness, but it swings down the hill. And that's partially the reason for an alleyway here and not a public street, is because of this topography issue that this much higher development here creates at this intersection.
So you're going to be putting fill in?
I'm sorry?
You're going to be putting fill in?
To build up the street, yes. This, right here is where the existing curvature of the road is, and so this area will be on fill.
Okay.
Transportation impact analysis is not required because the thresholds for TIA are not met. I cannot speak to the impacts or plans on Ashland Street and Clay Street, as that's outside the scope of this project. The City of Ashland is able to speak to it and ODOT, and in discussions with them, there are no plans for that intersection at this time. As for the issues with the single point of access on Wing Spread, which essentially functions like a large cul-de-sac, the limited vehicle trips generated by this project will have minimal impacts on the driveway situation, and this proposal will not fix that situation. In fact, this proposal actually could potentially relieve some of the trips off of Vallard onto Clay because trips within Snowberry Brook will be able to conveniently disperse to the north to Abbott, and then east to Tolman or west to Clay. Essentially, there's some notes here about Clay Street's a neighborhood collector and has an average daily trip of, anticipated average daily trip of 15,000 to 5,000 daily trips, and using the information from the Clay Street, or the East Main Street Park, this is the trip counts that were at the Clay and Abbott intersection. So the street is just barely getting to the low end of the vehicle counts for the type of street that Clay Street is. There's 24 a.m. peak hour trips and 31 p.m. peak hour trips with multiple dispersal points. This map shows a graphic of some of the dispersal points for automobiles, pedestrians, and there's even an RVTD Route 17 Ashland Circulator bus stop in the vicinity. So trips can go to the north to Abbott off of Engle. This is Abbott here. Go east and west to Tolman. This is Dollar Hyde. Could go down to Dollar Hyde. This is Vallard here, which goes and curves, so vehicles would be limited to that. But for pedestrians, there's a pathway that leads through the Snowberry Brook development and continues to the south on McCall Drive, and pedestrians can access sidewalks through McCall and through this development. There is sidewalk, complete sidewalk along Clay Street, and then just past this property, it jumps over to the other side of the street and continues down to East Main Street. So there's multiple dispersal points through, from this development via the surrounding street system. All required public infrastructure extensions and provisions for city water, electric, sanitary sewer, and storm drainage have been proposed in discussions with the City of Ashland Public Works Department, City of Ashland Electric Department, Talent Irrigation District. The proposed development can be found to have adequate facilities provided to and through to allow for annexation approval and preliminary subdivision. All infrastructure will be extended in a manner consistent with best practices for public infrastructure improvements. These are the four open space areas. They total more than 16,000 square feet in area where 10,454 square feet is required. Three of the open space areas will provide for both passive and active recreation, these smaller ones. This will have a play area. This is the stormwater detention facility. It's anticipated there'll be like a walking track around it, and then this is the wetland buffer zone and the wetland itself. There's a pedestrian path that continues to the north here into the adjacent subdivision on the north side of the property line, Bud's Dairy subdivision. The individual building design is contemporary. The, it's a more modern aesthetic than what's found in the 1990s and mid-2000 developments in the area. The preliminary exterior elevations utilize a combination of roof heights, cascading roof form. It allows a large surface area for installation of future solar panels if desired by homeowners, and each dwelling will have a strong sense of entry and material choices reflective of the surrounding neighborhood for residential and multifamily uses. The facades are broken into smaller elements using reveals, recesses, trims, window and door location. There is a mix of housing types proposed within the development, including detached residential duplexes, accessory dwelling units, and multifamily dwellings, similar to what's happening in the impact area. There are 16 two-bedroom apartments proposed, of which are proposed to be restricted to 80% of the area median income for rentals. And the exception standard requires, the exception to the standard that requires a comparable mix with the market rate units is requested because it is only known what the number of bedrooms will be within the fourplex units. It's not known throughout the subdivision. The site plan has presently 13 two-bedroom units of the 21 single-family lots, so it could vary. The developer intends to build the affordable housing unit and keep them as his own property, and then rent them out to the standards. They're proposed to be constructed in the first 50% of all the market rate units, and it's anticipated that all the fourplexes would be constructed at the same time. Thus, the similar market rate and affordable apartments would be developed simultaneously. The proposed exception allows, the proposed exception to allow the affordable housing units to be of two-story apartments allows the developer to hold them at that 80% area median income, and allows them to be developed using commercial financing that's available to the development of apartment houses on, like, single-family or detached dwellings. It allows for an immediate injection of new deed-restricted affordable housing units into the City of Ashland Market. The affordable units all share the same space, open space, roads, sidewalks, et cetera, with the other dwelling units within the subdivision, and all amenities are available to all units. I have a whole host of the images. These are all within your packet, but this is a... These are all within your packet, but this is a example of a detached, single-story two-bedroom unit. It's the A-type unit. This is another A-type unit, two-bedroom unit, detached, single-family style. This is a B unit. It is also a two-bedroom. B unit, option A. Then there is option, C unit, option A's three-bedroom. I think I'm ahead of myself. The D units are two-bedroom dwelling units with attached accessory dwelling units. Same thing here. This is a two-bedroom with an attached accessory dwelling unit. The E units are three-bedroom, and an F unit is a three-bedroom with an attached accessory dwelling unit. In the packet, there's a whole number of accessory buildings. I only included some of them here. I didn't include the single-story accessory dwellings. Essentially, these are the detached garages, detached accessory units that are potentials at the back of the properties. So in conclusion, based on the most currently available data, Ashland is presently deficient in providing adequate land area, buildable land area for multifamily properties, utilizing the data provided by the Buildable Lands Inventory of 2011 and the Housing Needs Analysis of 2012 and the 2020 Housing Capacity Analysis, and further evidenced by the less than 1% vacancy rate amongst available housing stack, there's an inadequate supply of land area for multifamily and suburban level of residential development. The annexation of additional suburban residential zoned land is consistent with the housing element and the Proposed Housing Strategy Implementation Plan that seeks remedies to reducing barriers to residential development, including annexation of land to provide additional area for multifamily housing. That concludes my presentation. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, have any questions? Go ahead.
So I think it's clear, but the single-family lots will be sold as lots, and the townhomes are going to be built by the owner.
Correct.
So, but the lots are going to be the size that they're shown here, and they're not going to be able to create that much variation in, I guess I'm trying to just get clarity on the exception. It's fine. I don't really have a question.
Okay.
I realize.
Anybody else has a question? Go for it.
But if I heard you correctly, the townhomes, the affordable townhomes will be, may continue to be owned by the developer and will be rental units.
Correct.
The others will be sold as property for single-family homes.
Correct.
But the affordable and the market rate townhomes will all be the same, and they'll all be owned by the developer, or no?
I can't say that the market rate.
Townhomes.
Fourplexes will be owned by the developer. They are on their own parcels of land, so they could be owned by someone else.
So there'll be a mix.
Potentially a mix of ownership, but the intention is that he would build the affordable units and hold them in his ownership.
Thank you very much.
More clarification. But all of the townhomes would be two-bedroom?
Correct.
Whether market or affordable.
Correct. All the townhomes are the same unit, which is this. Yes. These are the townhomes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We will now turn to members of the public who would like to address us. We have several people who have indicated an interest. Alan Ackroyd, by Zoom, I believe.
Mr. Ackroyd was on Zoom, but he left. I sent him in here asking him to continue watching on RMTV. I had a response, so I definitely just gonna come back.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then we have some pink sheets. Suzanne Marie. You have five minutes.
Thank you. So I live at Snowberry at 321 Engle Street at the dead end. And next door, the one concern is not only the wetlands, but it was also a migratory bird sanctuary that have been coming there for hundreds and hundreds of years. And also, my concern before this subdivision was evacuation. I've been at the SmokeWise meetings, and I said, we'll be incinerated. Every single, I worked for architects and design builders way back in the 70s and 80s, and none of this would have flown. One ingress egress street going into every single subdivision where you have hundreds of people to try to get out onto Clay Street. So we have about seven, eight subdivisions. And right now, that is a problem. We have a problem with, the city has an abandoned house sitting at the corner of Villard and Clay Street. And we have one entrance out, which is Villard. And I've been asking since I've been there about getting paint, yellow paint, so that the cars aren't parked all the way out. Because otherwise, you have to be in the middle of the street to look, to see if you can get through. I don't know what it's going to take. I asked the police officer, and he said, city didn't have the money or the manpower to do it, yet all the streets are being fixed. But it's dangerous. It's not only, I know there's some people are trying to do a petition to get a speed, speed stop on Clay Street because traffic goes up and down at, I don't know what they're doing, from 40 miles an hour zipping down the street. And we have a lot of children in our subdivision. But in order if there is a fire like we had, and if it's on that side of town, I was at a hostel at the time because I just got back from a barter trade. And it happened so quickly that they can't, we're right at the corner of 14, 14 exit, that they couldn't, they didn't have time to stop the traffic coming over. And all these semis are coming down Hershey Street. It was like, we were supposed to be ready to prepare to evacuate. There's no way we could even get out onto the street. So that's a major problem down at that south end. But it's between Ashland and Main Street, and we've got McCall. We have, can't think of a subdivision that, right next door across the street from Wingspan, which is a big trailer park, and they only have one road in and out. We have two subdivisions with lots of people, and the cars are on both sides of the street. And so it's almost hard to get when somebody's coming in, that you have to try to move over to even get a delivery truck, let alone emergency trucks or fire trucks to try to get in easily and out. I always have a problem of telling people, please do not park all the way down to the dead end because emergency or anybody cannot turn around to get out. And we do not have, there's only a walkway from Clay Street to Engle Street. It does not go through. The only way that you can get to Tolman is to go down to the East Village subdivision and go through that. It's only that short distance. That has been closed out, so you can no longer go through there to the YMCA property. And so, yes, they say half of it will go to Ashland Street, but you've got all the subdivisions and homes on the other side of Ashland Street that will be merging onto Ashland to try to get out of town. And then you have going down to Main Street. We have, if we have another subdivision, I know everybody wants to have Engle Street put through. They go, yay, we'll have another exit out. But we're going to have all those people in there. We're not going to be able to get out. I mean, it's been a scary problem, especially being so close to having fires all the time of where we're going to get out. And I've asked that question many times, and they go, well, we can't tell you because we don't know where the fire would be coming from. I said, I know, I just want to know the exits, you know, possible exits. Because that time that we had the fire, all exits except for Highway 66, you couldn't get out. And if it wasn't for Green Springs coming down and putting out the fire at Immigrant Lake that somebody set that would have blown right into Ashland, we would have gone along with Talent and Phoenix. But it's a big problem because of all the trucks and traffic coming over, that you cannot stop them before they get to Exit 14. I mean, it's really a problem when we have an accident on there and so forth, but I don't see how, it's a problem right now of just trying to get everybody out. There's just too many people and too many cars.
Would you wrap up your comments, please?
The what?
Wrap up your comments, please.
That's it. I just feel that we're in a, we're in a fire trap as it is, let alone have another subdivision there.
Thank you very much. Pauline Short.
Hello.
Hello.
I live on Dollar Hyde, and we're the East Village HOA. It's no longer Bud's Dairy, by the way. And my issue is, on the state map, the wetland is much larger. It also feeds our three wetlands that we care for and the one that runs behind Chautauqua Trace. So I'm wondering why it got made so much smaller, because if you look on the map that she had up here, it's a much bigger green area, and it does fill up with quite a lot of water, and it does make a big difference to that whole channel going down. The other thing is, it is good to have another exit onto Clay. The only problem is, we also have Chautauqua Chase on the other side of us, which is quite a few people living in there. They use Abbott and Dollar Hyde quite a lot to go to Clay Street. So it's pretty busy in the mornings and in the evenings. But also, I would recommend, we need to put no parking on one side of those streets. They're narrow streets. And if we have to evacuate and there's cars parked on either side, you only get one car going through. You can't get two, especially if it's pickup trucks on either side. So that happens quite a bit, and there's a very narrow spot where Abbott goes around into Chautauqua Trace. If they're parked there, you, the fire truck barely got through there the other day. So you want to make sure that at least one side of Abbott and one side of Dollar Hyde are no parking. I mean, it makes it harder, but at least then we can exit and enter easier. But I am worried about that wetland because that's something that we've cared for for years through our subdivisions, and I'm wondering why it got made so much smaller than what's on the Oregon state map.
Do you want to comment?
So the state maps and the city maps that were developed were, for the most part, done by aerial photography. And when wetlands are actually delineated, they often are different size because it's based on actually going out there and looking at the soils and the plants and the water source. So it could still be a wet area and not necessarily be a wetland if it doesn't have the three criteria that make it legally a wetland. So it's kind of a drag, but that's what happens when it's delineated. They're not going to get rid of the wetland. They're still going to, the buffer's just smaller. So all they did by having it be smaller than what was assumed to be before is shrink the buffer zone. So it's not going to get filled or changed, really. And the parking thing that you're talking about, we have no jurisdiction over that. You would have to go to a different commission.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have Fred Stafford Horse.
Like Paulie, I live right down the street from East Village HOA and live on Dollar Hyde, and I have similar concerns. One is the traffic. Clay Street is extremely poorly maintained. I think it's just used a lot, and it's pretty beat up. And then at the top of Clay, as you guys all know, there's a pretty dangerous turn in order to get onto Ashland Street. So it just seems like we're compounding that problem, both the use of that road, which, like I said, is not well-maintained, and that dangerous curve at the top. I can't, in the, making Engle a primary feeder into this new development is, I guess, going to increase the traffic on Dollar Hyde. Dollar Hyde is currently, to get two cars, you can't get two cars by through. One has to pull over and the other goes through, so that just seems impractical. And I have a similar issue with the wetland. I really don't, I mean, I guess it's code, but we have, as an HOA, dedicated literally thousands and thousands of dollars to maintaining those wetlands, and we've recently changed one of them for, at a cost over $10,000 into all native species. And I know that the commission earlier was able to alter the speed of light in your communications on Zoom, but it seems like gravity is bringing that water down, and I just don't understand how the wetlands, I mean, we have a pretty good flow in all three of those wetlands, which then ultimately empties into the city land north of Abbott. So the water flows regularly through those three wetlands and then, like I said, empties into city property. I doubt there's a spring there, so it seems to me that the water is flowing across this proposed subdivision. And why there isn't a wetlands, I understand that it's a buffer. I don't understand how a buffer, what happens to all the, where all the water south of that buffer zone looks like is a proposed street. So I'm not really clear why, we're, we have three wetlands, which we pay a lot of attention to and we're proud of, and then this development has a tiny buffer. Just, you know, I'm sure there's regulations I don't understand, but I think by maintaining the wetlands, the water that does flow down would help the bird situation and would just preserve the idea of wetlands. We've adhered to it. I'd like to see this subdivision adhere to making that strip a complete wetland and make it native species like we did. That's about it.
Thank you very much. Does the applicant have any rebuttal to make?
There, according to the city records, there is a path on this side of the property that is a public pedestrian access easement, and so we were required to connect to that. Can't speak to what actually is physically happening there, if it's closed or gated or. That's okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. Here. So the access units are in this area.
Okay. The access is still being secured. It's not coming up yet. But the access housing...
Yeah, there's a wetland. There's a pathway.
When that was installed or approved, there was a pathway there. I'm not sure if it's run over now. But that was part of the requirement. Would that wetland in your subdivision was done, that there'd be a walkway adjacent to it?
Um, as far as the wetland goes, the property has Talent Irrigation District water free-flowing across it right now. And I'm sorry, I forgot which lateral it is, but if you look at historical aerial photographs of this area, the greenery gets smaller and smaller and smaller as development occurs, because these ditches are required to be piped. And so they do not free-flow across the property.
Orient is the street, okay.
Here's Clay Street.
Okay.
So this is one ditch here, and then this is an open channel. And so right now, water is just free-flowing across the property, gets flood irrigated, and there's no controls on it. As part of this requirement, the Talent Irrigation District is requiring that this be hard-piped. It's hard-piped to the south. And so this was a wetland that the city was required to install, and you can see it is very not wet. It's not green, and that's partially because the piping took the water that was free-flowing from Clay Street. There's a pipe that comes across the road and connects through. It's hard-piped through Bud's Dairy or East Village. And then the Clay Street Park is also required to hard-pipe the ditch that freeflows on their property. The end user of this line is on the north side of East Main Street. So essentially, the water will go away. As Commissioner Kinkaren noted, though it might look like there's a wetland, because it's wet, because there's sloppy ground, because there's birds and so forth, the wetland delineation was done originally, I think in 2015, and it was a, a smaller wetland than what it looks like on the city maps. And then it was done again in 2022. That wetland delineation was approved by the Department of State Lands. And it's because the property doesn't have the three types of soil, vegetation, and water, which are required for a wetland. It doesn't have hydro soils, essentially is what they found, and the wetland information is in the packet. There is more than one exit proposed from this subdivision.
Before you go off the wetlands, can you look back through previous slides?
Excuse me. Please do not talk. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
There's more than one exit from the subdivision. There's the entrance onto Clay Street. There are the two alleys onto Clay. And then, as noted in the earlier presentation, it does exit to the north into the East Village, and then can go east-west to either Tolman Creek Road or to Clay Street. Cannot speak necessarily to fires in this valley. It's a difficult situation that we all were subject to. The multifamily dwelling units will be required to have fire suppression systems. And as the houses in the development are envisioned, though they won't be necessarily constructed, there will be HOA rules and CCNRs. Most of the structures have fire-resistant exteriors, metal, metal roofing, concrete, stucco, hardy board, and that sort of thing to try to do what this development can to be least, to be more fire-resistant. And then the city's new ordinances, which restrict plant materials and so forth, also address fire resistance. And I think there's even a fence ordinance. You can't have wooden fences touching structures anymore. So things that happened in the past with subdivisions aren't allowed to occur anymore with new fire regulations. And as far, back to the wetland piece, there is a proposal that a stormwater dispersal trench be installed here. And one of the benefits of that is the treated stormwater will filter into the wetland and provide some additional watering that would be lost if it was just piped and no infiltration was allowed into it.
Here.
Um, one of the people that spoke was concerned that the white at the top of the drawing was a street, and I'd like you to point out that the wetland stays connected to the existing wetlands to the north or to the, wherever, yeah, the north.
So this is this portion of the wetland that's on this property. See if the aerial shows it. So this tax lot here is the tax lot within the East Village subdivision. That is their wetland. And then this is where the access six-unit affordable housing development is. So this remains connected to this. What won't be happening is just free-flowing of water across the site anymore, because as I said, this has to be hard-piped per Talent Irrigation District rules. I think I can back up. Essentially, this is the wetland here that feeds into the, this wetland.
That stormwater ditch that you're putting in, which is taking stormwater from the site back into the wetland, where's, what's the collection area for that?
Um, I don't believe that it's in any of the city slides. I could go back to my slideshow. It's in your packet on page, it'd be on the civil engineer drawings. It collects at the end of the new private street and the edge of Lot 14.
So it's taking the water through the site and putting it there?
Yes.
That's good.
Yeah, and then there'll be the tract C, which is also a stormwater detention facility.
And that's going to feed back to the wetland area?
That I don't know about. I believe it's a percolations type, so not really. There could be overflow that goes to it, but that's not the intention of it.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioner have questions? Thank you very much. Okay, I will now close the public hearing and close the record. So we are on to deliberations. What's your pleasure? Russell?
I just have a question here about the, the wetlands. So humans come along, they want to irrigate, they put in ditches, water kind of flows everywhere, it creates habitat, habitat moves in. Man changes, wants to, to develop essentially, and, and then the wetlands are still there. But we put everything in pipes instead of just letting the water run freely. I guess, what is our duty to this habitat that we've created, that we've just let develop, that's there now? And, you know, do we, do we reduce it? Do we maintain it? I mean, what is kind of like the ethical obligation, I would say, here?
I can't speak to the ethical obligation, but in terms of the code requirement, with the subdivision proposing, the applicant's responsible to delineate the actual wetland that's on the site currently. And then depending on the size of that wetland, the City of Ashland has further requirements that that wetland area and a buffer area from the upland edge of the wetland, in this case, 20 feet from that, be undeveloped so that it can maintain that habitat. It doesn't, you know, the initial state lands map for local wetland inventory was done, I believe, in 2007. And so, you know, obviously irrigation changes, climate changes will have impacts on wetlands, which is why we ask applicants to have a delineation that's within five years or...
The delineation's valid for five years.
So once the Department of State Lands validates a wetland delineation, it remains valid for five years. And I believe this applicant indicated theirs was done in 2022, so it's within that window at this point.
Thanks, Brandon. And then, at a minimum, we are supposed to maintain the delineation, but the applicant has then provided the 20-foot buffer in addition to the minimum requirement?
And that is the requirement. You retain both the wetland and a 20-foot buffer for small wetlands. For large, significant wetlands, it's a 50-foot buffer. The applicant's presentation identified the property to the south, the Snowberry. There's a full acre of that property that was, the center of that acre was the, a wetland, and then a 50-foot buffer on all sides created that large area to the south. But again, since that was developed in 2009, changes in water flow have impacted how green it is. I don't, I believe it's, you know, that assessment that the applicant referenced in terms of the hydrophilic vegetation, the soil types, and the water presence are all key components that Department of State Lands evaluates.
So I see that Greg is making his motion again.
I brought his motion back up.
Should we wait a few minutes, 15 seconds to let Greg speak to his motion? Do you still want?
I asked if he'd like to re-say his motion. He would like me to...
Okay. You, you asked him if he, what?
He wanted to...
Can...
I can make that motion happen. He said yes.
I can speak to it if it's not too disruptive. I concur with the staff's recommendation and move that the city council approve the annexation and approve the outline plan with conditions as proposed on page 17, 17 through 19, as verbally amended by Derek.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the various permits we're being asked to approve and include the conditions from staff with the addition of the verbal condition...
Condition 6D and C for, uh, correct lots as a change or so.
Yes. And to add one, add a seventh condition to meet the bedroom mix with a, of affordable, for, for the affordable units with deed restriction.
If that's where you check this.
So possible to show those?
Um, we didn't have them picked out. I mean, it was condition 6C begins with Lot 16 through 24, could be Lot 7 through 24. And the other would be a condition, final plans that'll identify a mix of bedrooms for the affordable units comparable to the bedroom mix of the market rate units and include post-deed restrictions to the general plans.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second discussion. Russell?
So on the seventh condition, I think I remember the applicant saying that there is some benefit to having the duplexes be all two-bedroom, and it had something to do with the financing. And I would hate to create a restriction that makes it harder to get financing to create affordable housing.
Go for it.
The deed restriction doesn't affect the townhomes. It affects the future single-family homes.
Got it, okay.
Okay, are we ready to vote? Anybody else, any other questions? Michael, give us a roll call.
Commissioner Parkinson. Commissioner Kinkaren.
Yes.
Commissioner Heron.
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
Commissioner Marr.
Yes.
Commissioner McCrackenchin.
Yes.
Chair Werner.
Yes.
So the motion passes and... Okay, the motion passes. Thank you very much. Thanks for your participation.
The 2010 map adopted by the city did include it, and there was no legislative process between then in order to incorporate it onto the map. That 2010 map, again, was updated in 2017 and retained that area for a Ashland Modified Flood Plane. You know, in, in essence, we have no elevation data or base study delineating that current mapped area. It was identified initially as a hand-drawn map that was added at the request of the Planning Department to our GIS system, and ultimately was incorporated into the adopted map signed by the mayor. By doing so, we do, did identify, not only are there portions of the Ashland Modified Flood Plane map that are high in excess of the top of bank, there's actually portions of Hamilton Creek that are not within that flood-mapped area. So it does show that there's a correction that's needed. I do want to re, or to iterate that the FEMA map is unchanged by this request. FEMA is a regulatory control that is based on elevation data, and we're not proposing to request that the planning commission direct us to modify the FEMA maps. We're only looking at the city-adopted flood plane map, which were originally identified to identify areas of historic flooding that were not represented in FEMA's materials back when it was adopted. Staff cannot initiate a legislative planning action, and so that is... a legislative planning action. And so that is within your purview or the city councils to authorize the city to initiate a map correction under Ashland Municipal Code 18.5.8.040. So should the commission concur, that would direct staff to prepare an application on behalf of the city, findings for a legislative amendment to remove the erroneous flood plane designation from Hamilton Creek. Final review of that proposal would come both before the planning commission and the city council for adoption. And at that point, the council and planning commission's recommendation could determine whether there was a, an error that needed to be corrected. The alternative to this method would be to ask the applicant to, an applicant, namely ORA in this case, to submit an application for a legislative change to the map based on the study that they had done for future development of their property. So with that, if you have any questions?
That costs money, right?
An application process, I think, is $5,200. They have already spent consultant cost money and hiring a engineering company to look at the, analyze the base flood elevation. But preparing an application outside of the city fees is also an additional expense. So...
I would hate to have us impose that kind of cost on, on what's essentially a nonprofit good guy.
Yeah. And I think regardless of the applicant, once we were presented with the information of the historical adoption not being clear in the record, it made it evident to staff that it was a city issue, a city error, and that's why we're bringing it to you for your consideration.
Yeah. So I would support a motion to ask, to initiate, ask staff to initiate a map amendment.
Second.
That wasn't a motion. But you can make the motion. Yeah.
I will make a motion to have staff prepare an amendment officially adopting maps, removing the Ashland Modified Flood Plane from this portion of Hamilton Creek.
Now you can say.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was gonna say, sorry, can you restate the motion for Commissioner Marr?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. The motion was to ask staff to, ask staff to initiate a map amendment to correct the, oh, what is it? Correct the, the map and make it not include ORA.
For the entirety of the Ashland Modified Flood Plane relating to Hamilton Creek.
Yeah.
That one.
That one. Okay, so Greg likes it, yes. So I think, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay.
Aye.
Yes. Do we have, I guess we need to wait 10 more seconds?
I see an aye there in the chat.
Yep, I do too. Okay, we're gonna go with it.
I have a quick question here at the end for clarification on the presentation that was made last study session on our attendance, our Zoom meetings, our length of service, even?
Go for it.
Maybe you guys could clarify for us.
You know, I can clarify that the guidance document that was prepared is intended to apply to all committees, commissions, and boards. And we do have a Board of Appeals, so that is one that is addressed. As far as guidelines, there are specific state rules that guide planning commission that supersede our local requirements. And that's why the planning commission was in some ways carved out. In terms of terms, it is the expectation, is my understanding, and Counselor Nowor might be able to elaborate, but that all terms be aligned. And so if you have a term that is ending in April, there will be a request that commissioners extend that to December so that terms can begin at the calendar year. So that is one change that you would anticipate. The other changes in terms of how long someone can serve on a committee or commission would apply to the planning commission as it does to other commissions, because that's a locally established determination. There's no requirement under state law to stipulate the length of terms. So that's the, I don't know if that clarifies your question, but it is something that followed our last meeting.
Clarification from the last meeting is that there's no Zoom, mandatory Zoom number that we have to follow to stay on the commission.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that, that because the, and I think that the council was addressing that in the general rules as well, that wanting to ensure that people could participate on commissions or committees, even if they were traveling or sick.
Great. Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for a lovely evening.
Bye, Greg.
He said his audio was back.
Bye.
It was a separate audio issue that cut out for a moment on RV TV's side, so he lost the RV TV feed momentarily. So that, that, yes.
Just a 30-second delay.
I had a phone.
She, she couldn't hear either.